There are definitely a few more people coming.
We just admitted Mary.
Okay, very good. Let's see, Karen will be joining us by the lowland. And Adam Hubbard was a Navy. I never heard Lisa Chase can't make it. She's actually literally in the air this evening. And Carrie, I have not heard from, I've not heard from with Elaine. So I will say that we'll get started and we do have a quorum of our commission. And in fact, we have our full commission here. Alright. So I'm going to begin the meeting and Peter and Ry and Mary. Have you all seen the meeting materials for tonight? They're on the town webpage for planning commission meetings under documents for this evening.
Yes, I have seen the documents.
Alright, so called the meeting to order at 6:36. Sue Copley, Chair of the Planning Commission. And I welcome everybody here. I'll just mention that this is a monthly meeting of the planning commission. We have some regular, regular and very important business to do at the beginning. And then we will be moving into, most of the meeting will be about the zoning bylaw modernization. And we have members of that advisory committee here with us. And we also have interested members of the public joining us. And so I'm just going to quickly go around the room and please speak up and say your name clearly. This is also a sound check for the AI companion, which is taking notes for us. And it can do a voice print. And if you speak clearly enough, sometimes the notes will say you and not just Sue said the whole time. It's helpful to have that. So we'll go around your name and your relation to the project. We'll start here with Andrew.
Andrew Morrison, member of the planning commission.
Jim Oliver, someone from the town.
And the advisory committee.
Okay, I guess I have that official role.
Yes, you do.
Mary Tomford, newest planning commissioner.
First meeting.
Yeah, first meeting. Well, second meeting.
First meeting as a commissioner.
As a commissioner, yes.
Vanessa Long, potential new planning commission member.
First meeting.
And Susan Westa, Wyndham Regional Commission.
Mike McConnell, Wyndham Regional Commission.
Doug Brand, I'm on the advisory committee.
Phil Bannister, planning commission.
Peter, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Peter Pajee, Director of Real Estate Development at Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust, part of the advisory committee.
Ry?
Hey, I'm Ry. I am part of the advisory committee as well.
And Mary? Mary, could we know your last name? We have to record who attends the meeting. We put it in the chat.
Mary has left the meeting.
Oh, she's left the meeting. Okay. Karen, would you like to introduce yourself?
Karen Astley, Town Manager, and I'm on the zoning bylaw modernization committee.
Welcome all. Thank you. So everybody hopefully has their agenda for the meeting tonight. I'm going to quickly go over it. This meeting is being recorded as required by open meeting law. And we also have the AI companion, which helps us with the note taking. Let's see, the at the moment, so we have the overall agenda. And if there's any public comment or items not on the agenda, when I go through this, please let me know that. Review for approval draft meeting minutes, we have them for two meetings. We have it for the 4th of February and the 11th of March, not in town. It's close to the time. We'll review some action items. And then we will move to election of a planning commission clerk as a nomination that will be considering and voting on. And then we'll have the zoning bylaw modernization project portion of the meeting. We'll have an update about the status of the project and the types of changes that are being looked at at this point and what that work looks like. We'll be talking about the community meeting next week, April 10th, and preparing for that. And we'll review the project schedule. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll wrap up, talk about next steps and any meeting feedback. You'll see at the bottom of the agenda are the next coming meetings. So make sure you have those on your calendar. The meetings with the zoning bylaw committee are almost, are always here at the public library and at 6:30, which is earlier, normally seven o'clock for planning commission meetings. And also I will do my monthly briefing for the select board on April 16th. I just want to note materials in your packet. You have your agenda, then there are draft meeting minutes from those two days, February 4th and the 11th of March. You'll have the action item review after that. And then you will see something that's related to action items. This is my monthly report to the select board in March, which provides a lot of background information and providing it here as a way that it's available to the public to see. And then behind that, you'll see the project schedule, which has not changed since you last saw it, February 4th. And then behind that, you'll see a meeting flyer. Some of you have it in color. I think most of you have it in black and white, my dad. But this is for the April 10th meeting, to get the word out. And then we also have, in addition, in terms of handouts at the meeting, the status update from Wyndham Regional Commission on the bylaw project. And we also have the agenda for community meeting next week. And then one of the tools for that meeting, I'll think like a developer, Vermont Homes for All, we'll talk about that. So that's what is in this meeting packet and everything is available online. Any questions about the meeting materials? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, with that, let's move on to the meeting minutes from the past meetings. And I will make a motion to approve the meetings from Tuesday, February 4th. May I have a second? This is a good place to be taking notes. After a second, we'll have a, oh, second, you can't because you're not a commission member. Thank you, Jim.
I keep forgetting my role here.
I know. Only commissioners can second it, and it's best if they were here. So that would be Andrew or Pip.
And I wrote them, so it would be best. I was second.
Okay, any discussion of the minutes of February 4th? Other than how great they are? Alright, hearing no comments or discussion, all in favor of removing the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Okay. And so what I would say, as somebody was not at the meeting on February 4th, you would abstain.
Okay.
Because, I did repeat them.
That was not fair.
You were not there. But you were there for the March 11th meeting.
Correct.
So I will make a motion to approve the minutes from March 11th. Somebody please second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mary. Any comment or discussion on the minutes from March 11th? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor of removing the minutes from March 11th as presented, all in favor? And that would be four?
Oh, were you hesitating? Was that a?
Yeah, so Sue, on tonight's agenda, we have review for approval draft meeting minutes from February 4th, February 10th, and March 11th.
Yeah, I noted at the top of the meeting.
In my March 11th minutes, I said that you were preparing meeting minutes from the February 11th.
Right, but it's actually 10th.
So, so I have an error.
That's why I didn't do it.
I know. So, sorry.
There was a grant even.
Would you like the minutes to reflect that?
So the minutes should reflect the change, that the minutes from March 11th should reflect the change that under action item number one, the date should be corrected to February the 10th.
Okay, thank you.
I was just testing you all, seeing if you read my minutes.
Okay, all in favor of the change? Alright.
Just because of that, I'm never going to do them again.
Yeah, yeah, I'm done. No one needs them anyway.
So one of the things that I have done in the past is just keep an action item list so that we make sure that we take care of things. Some even had my name on them, so. But let's see, so I still, and I've actually changed it to the 10th on the action item list. So that's still pending. We have minutes done from the 4th and March 11th. We did approve, we did request select board approval of the municipal planning grant application that was due March 31st yesterday. They did that.
And Chair, were you able to complete that grant application?
I'm happy to say yes.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
It was submitted.
That's great. Thank you. That's incredible. Thank you.
It had 10 letters of support. A lot of letters. Thank you, Wyndham Regional Commission, BDCC, Discover Putney, the Our Future, the Housing Solutions Task Force. Yeah, Landmark College, it was a very strongly supported proposal. People really helped out. So that's great. And I did report to the town clerk, the nomination of Mary Tomford. Oh, no, for me, it's my nomination for me to continue as commission chair, sorry. And then that we would take care of electing a clerk at this meeting. Normally you do it in March, so we put it off till this meeting. And I did sign the letter and sent it to the Vermont Housing Conservation Board from the discussion we had at the March 11th meeting with the Green Commons of Vermont. So that's been done and received and appreciated by the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. And then at the meeting on March 19th, the select board did approve the nomination that Mary Tomford could join us. And I did do an orientation for Mary at her office as role of commissioner and clerk. And we will be updating the website with materials for the April 10th meeting. That is in play with the Assistant Town Clerk. We've got the calendar notice out for the April 1st meeting. You will receive that and have an update note. And we have presentation materials for April 10th underway. We'll be seeing preview of them tonight. Thank you. And we will further take a look at adjusting the schedule for the project when we get a little further in the review of the regulations. So at the moment, there's no change to the schedule. We have the schedule as it was, February 4th. And recruit additional members. Wow, welcome Vanessa. And the other thing I just want to put on the record is that we learned on Friday that Putney's proposal to do the crosswalk on Route 5 to connect the side of the road to the village and to Putney Landing was approved. And so that project will be getting underway. There'll be a design and construct, design process and then a construction process. And I don't have any further information. We just received them Friday. There's no contract yet, but we did get selected for the awards. So hooray, that's great. And I want to thank Pip Bannister because Pip really began that project and saw it all the way through, really helped write the grant proposal and all of that. So Pip, you get a lot of credit carrying the water on that. Thank you.
Is it, where is it exactly?
I don't know. Between the two banks, exact location not yet determined.
So very close to here.
Very close to here. And once, once we got it down to a crosswalk in this area with a walkway between the two banks, so people don't have to walk through the parking lots as they do. There was a lot of support from the community to do this. It's stage one of a larger project to try to have a safer crossing closer from Putney Landing Road. But that requires a whole redesign of that intersection. And so that has been reported to V-Trans and we will remind them again that that is something that we want them to get going on. But at least we have the crosswalk and the sidewalk coming. So hooray. So those are the, that is my action plan review. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, then I will move on to the election work, the nomination of Mary Tomford to become the commission clerk for 2025. To begin the process, I'll make a motion that Mary Tomford be elected to serve as planning commission clerk for this next year until next town meeting. Second?
I will second that.
Second, okay. I will open up the discussion and I would invite you, Mary, to make any comments about your interest in doing that.
Yeah, so for me, it is something that I feel very comfortable with. I'm taking minutes. I want to make sure that the public understands what we're doing here and that they're able to under, to clearly read the notes and have those posted online on a regular basis.
And she's also learned that there's other work that goes associated with this.
That's correct. And I'm just fine with that as well.
And I just learned that both you and I as Chair and as clerk, actually going to get town email addresses. And we will have access to post things on the web.
Now, don't you sort of regret?
And then the last comment I would make is, thank you, Andrew. Andrew has been doing this for a couple of years?
No.
It was one year. It felt like a couple of years.
It was less than a year. It felt like a couple of years.
Thank you, Andrew, for doing that.
Not my talent. The timeliness of it is not my talent. I appreciate that someone else is going to do it better, so.
Thank you, Andrew, really. And it's important in our town work that people take these positions and roles and, and it really does take time and thought to do it. And we were well served in your work, so thank you. Alright, well then, any other comments on this nomination before I call the question? Alright, all in favor? Aye, you can help vote for yourself.
Thank you, Mary. I'm really pleased that, you know, you have an interest and that we have another planning commission member. So thank you very much.
It's exciting, yeah.
Yeah. And then I'll just note at this moment that Vanessa Long had sent us a letter, a couple of weeks ago actually, expressing interest in serving on a committee in the town, but planning commission was top of the list. And Vanessa, I'll just give you a moment if you want to just say something about that, so we can get to know who you are. And she's here this evening to learn about what we do and how we do it.
Sure, thanks. So I grew up in Putney. Hi, Jim.
Hello.
I'm still a U. And have had the really good fortune of being able to move back into the house that I grew up in in Putney as an adult with my family. So that's, that's been a real treat. But you know, it's affordability is a struggle. The property tax increases last year were a big struggle for us. And I recognize that housing is a huge issue in this area personally and professionally. I work with about 250 other local employers. My professional area of expertise right now is employee benefits. So I see people in a wide variety of industries, private and public municipalities and everywhere, probably like very, very small to the very, very large. And it's just a common issue everywhere. And I was really struck when I was, I started kind of digging into all of the information that Sue and Karen sent to me. First of all, by how much work this commission has done over the past couple of years, it's done a lot of work. So I've been very impressed by that. I learned a lot reading the housing study that, that was done and conducted and really kind of dug into the process and the community involvement. And so, you know, right now, I have served on other boards before. I was on the board of my kid's school through COVID and was on the leadership team and that time had to take a couple of years off to take care of, you know, my family's medical stuff, but now have teenagers and time and ready to really kind of dig in again. So I'm excited to be here. Yeah, thank you, Vanessa. And I'm excited to really help kind of make Putney a place where people can come back and further families and feel like they can stay.
Thank you.
What's your last name? Long, Angie? So thank you, Vanessa. And with that, we're going to move on to our zoning bylaw modernization material. And I'm going to turn it over to Sue Westa and Mike McConnell. And now, Mike, you have a presentation you want to share. And we'll continue to monitor to see if our, the participants joining us online have any questions. You can also use the chat.
Oh, I wish so.
Either Sue, I guess, for that one.
No, just that, you know, you're going to kick this off. And this presentation is also in preparation for next week's public meeting. And one of the handouts that we included today, a status update, the topics and goals and issues that we've been looking at throughout this process. In blue, we've highlighted where we are now and that's kind of what we're going to share with this presentation.
And I'll just note that this document was what we had at the February 4th meeting. And so just there's commentary based on, on that to seem like a useful way to last meeting to this meeting.
Yeah, it'll generally follow the same number one, two, three, and four here with some more specific references as well. So, yeah, you'll hopefully don't get bored hearing it twice in two weeks, but you know, that's the breaks for viewing any planning commissions. So yeah, I'll just go through a little bit on the schedule, not much. And then two, red box here is where we're at now. Well, we will be there next week when I give this presentation for real. And that's just kind of the public meeting number one. Each of the blue boxes represents a specific time in which the public can be engaged in the process, likely was at the planning commission meetings where we will generally be in attendance as well. Dark blue are public meetings that'll, that'll be advertised, probably the same as, as the one next week. And then of course, the public hearings, which the planning commission will have one and the so forth, we'll have as well. So when we started this process, there were some broad, some overarching goals, to really take a look at the format and make sure it's as readable as possible. This is a pretty technical document. And if you don't deal with it every day, it's, it can, it can read gibberish. And we want to make it as readable for the average resident as possible. And I think we're making some, some pretty good progress on that. Also, you know, why use 10 words when you can say the same thing in five words, right? I think that goes to the readability element as well. One goal that I don't know if we're going to make is the shortening of the document. It is 108 pages, which is just, it's thick. But you know, some things, they just, they just have to be there. And one of the ways we're trying to shorten the document is by eliminating a lot of text in favor of some tables here that one blatantly lifted from the Housing For All manual, let this stay put out. I don't know that this is a direct injection into the document, but I think we will have a table, parking table that will pretty similar to that. And actually, most of these numbers on here do roughly correspond with, but Putney already does. So that was kind of nice to see that this is being presented as a model, kind of parking table for spaces for use and Putney's kind of already there. Another significant part of the document of section three or article three, which breaks down the different zone districts, is the dimensional standards. I think all told, they take up probably about a page and a half to two pages. And we're trying to get them down into what will be ultimately a slightly larger version of this, of this table here on the bottom. It just breaks down the different dimensional standards by zone districts. Lot area setbacks, height, et cetera. So that's something we're, we're going to be doing and I think I'll make a pretty big dent, definitely in the format. And hopefully it'll, it'll take some, take some of the work count out as well. One of the things that kind of became clear after conversations with the DRB and line commission was that the process for reviewing the types of projects that are highlighted in the zoning bylaw really needed to be looked at. Not that the review criteria was necessarily bad, but just that the mechanisms for those reviews need to be looked at. We're taking a hard look at those. I think we can improve that process for not only the public who maybe have an interest in these projects, but the applicants whose, I mean, every day is dollars off their, off their project or onto their project maybe. And then for the, for the DRB who actually has to go through each of these review criteria in the meeting. So hopefully we can, we can make it better for everybody. This is an example of the review process that I was kind of talking about, a conditional use review, which is in section 220 and also in other places throughout the document as well. There, the section that highlights what conditional use is, is a page and a half. And it also references between seven and nine other sections of the code, depending on kind of what you're doing. So that includes 32 different review criteria. So you can imagine being in a meeting, going through each of these review criteria, one after the other, can get pretty tedious. So yeah, trying to improve that a little bit. On the right hand side of the screen is just one section, probably about a third of the total use matrix that we've created for the project. And the brown or the tan C boxes are all of the review types, are all of the use types that would require a conditional use, you know, depending on the zone district there, that there in the top. So potentially, as you know, there starts to be an increasing development pressure in Putney, the DRB could be doing this all alone. So improving that process is pretty important. One of the other ways we're trying to lighten that load is to remove aspects of this, of the conditional use review, you know, make them not conditional uses. For example, there is a section, let's say 220.2 that, you know, listed setbacks, building height as a conditional use review. And, and those are much, much more appropriate to be handled with, I'll say, a variance or a waiver, which directly deal with those numerical dimensional values. So, yeah, we'll, we'll see.
Just a clarification, Pip may also be the one to answer this. My recollection when we're looking at multiple uses of zoning district, it's been typically used for our campuses in town, right? The multiple use to accommodate some of the strange.
It's a funny name for a sort of leftover district that is the first section of River Road. If you look at the map, it's where Quaker Roads used to be. And we, Mark, you've got Quaker Roads, but.
Most recently, Five Maples.
We owe time, yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, no, different, well, you know, I guess it was the side of that building.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so it's, it's an odd zoning district.
Yeah.
Does include some of Landmark. Okay.
Yeah, and that building hasn't been purged. Yeah. And that building has never been purchased by anyone.
Five Maples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For those who are potential commissioners, a conditional use review is generally intended to place conditions on a use that might be considered objectionable. So you can see here, you know, wireless telecom, municipal utility, safety-related facility, motor vehicle station, repair station, those types of things that people could potentially have issue with, depending on, you know, the complex, right? So all of these different review places in, in the VAS reference specific aspects of those uses. And that's why all these are there. So if you guys have any questions, we'd love to do. Stop me. And it's, we can start to talk and jargon very easily, and I want to avoid that. Definitely next week and for sure today as well.
But I'll point out, this will be an important thing we'll be looking at in this process. So this chart might look different, or, or how the process, how the review process happens for that might be different.
Yeah, yeah. Just to, I guess, take the use meter one steps further. The green peas are permitted by right. You generally need a site plan review for those. And that's a process we're looking at as well. And then the black holes is not allowed. So we'll go through the use metrics, I'm sure, in detail in the future meetings. To spend more time with it.
This is just a first eyes on it.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, like you said, Vanessa, you know, housing is a, is a big deal around here, really everywhere, especially, especially in Southern Vermont. We want to make sure that, you know, we hear more of those stories, you know, I was able to, I grew up here, I was able to come back and actually afford a house with my family, et cetera. The kids are going to go to Putney School, et cetera. So the bylaw update and by extension, the subdivision review, subdivision regulation update, isn't going to create housing. It's, it's just not. But it will create potentially a situation, an environment, which people can either build new housing, alter current housing to create another unit, make it easier potentially to rehab housing, which is happening in both of these photos here. Yeah, maybe create a space for, you know, apartment, view, et cetera. So it's about creating the environment. That's kind of what we're, what we're doing here. But other things that we can do within, within the bylaw is, you know, look at the uses that are allowed in specific districts, you know. All of the residential uses are highlighted in the use table. You can see that on the bottom left. And, you know, maybe expanding the permitted, the places where those types of uses are permitted might be appropriate, you know. That's something we're looking for, sure. So currently, single-family, two-family are allowed everywhere, and that's state law. That's something that is already in effect, even though we haven't effectively changed the bylaws because of this state law. So another way in which to create that environment is by maybe massaging the dimensional standards a little bit, you know, maybe there's lots, a bunch of lots in town that are smaller than maybe as normal. And by loosening maybe a setback requirement, you know, maybe someone can fit a more common, commonly built home type in, in that spot. So listening to EU restrictions, currently it's a conditional use. That's now being changed by state law. So we have to, we have to change that. That's just happening. And also just removing, one of the things we were asked to look at was removing barriers to potential changes in the village. There is an old maybe commercial building that could be rehabbed into housing. We wanted to make sure that that's something that could happen with the bylaw moving forward. Also, the residential energy code is pretty important. I want to make sure that that is something that is implemented with all new units that might get created.
Mike, I'm just going to add that we just finished the housing needs assessment project. And in that project, the recommendation is to build an additional 55 dwelling units in the next five years. Fifty-five in addition to the 25 that Windham Windsor Housing Trust is about to begin, beginning development of now. And to weatherize, renew, and expand 150 other houses. So it's just, this is really important to be able to achieve those kinds of goals. So we wanted actually the housing needs assessment to be done to sort of give an idea of like, what is the activity to do? We still need to have bylaws that meet multiple purposes, right? But, but we do want to, where housing should be, we want to try to make sure it can go without. There's, there's right to build or something close to right to build, make it as easy as possible.
Mike, we have a question here from Karen in the chat. Can you explain multi-family? Is that one building or multiple buildings?
That's a good question. Glad, glad I was brought up. I'm sure it'll come up next week. So currently, it's the definition for multi-family is one, two, three, four, or five units. I don't believe it really specifies if they are in multiple buildings unless it's an ADU to a single-family home. So two units on, on one, on one property. But that's something, that's a use type that is incurred with the, the state encourages it, the Housing For All manual, would you call it a manual?
Toolkit.
Toolkit. And so a cottage core, I think, is probably what they're, a multi-family situation. That would be in multiple buildings, be something like a cottage core. Or if it's, you know, an apartment complex, I guess. But these bylaws don't really contemplate that large scale of development. Kind of is five, five plus, I suppose. And that would be a conditional use in most places. So. Other aspects of the, of the bylaw date is looking at ways in which the bylaw can aid Putney in preserving of natural, natural resources, mainly the forest blocks. Putney has some pretty large forested areas in town, as I'm sure you all know. And that's kind of shown in the picture on the bottom. It's from the state. The bio finder that the state puts out, which is a pretty helpful tool to, to know about kind of the, the natural features of the land. All the purple is what the state considers to be a highest priority forest block. The lighter purple is just a priority forest block. And then the brown or tan areas in between those are priority connectivity blocks. So there's some pretty significant natural areas in town and trying to protect those communities the best we can through, through the zoning bylaw. And in the update, we're looking at potential overlay for those areas. And we will be presenting more next Thursday about kind of maybe not specifics of what that might look like, but a few examples of what it could, could potentially, what format could potentially take. We're thinking an overlay might be, is, that's certainly the most common throughout the state. So we're taking a look at that, and that'll be, you know, further discussed with Conservation Commission, with Planning Commission moving forward. But an overlay, just so everyone is, is clear, is on top of the existing zoning. So most of that area in purple would be conservation or research, resource zoning. Right now, in a forest block overlay, for lack of a better term, at this point, would overlay that zoning district. It's, yeah.
What's the effect of that overlay? Does it, is it, is it additional criteria to the additional mandatory criteria? I mean, there's the whole conditional versus imperative thing.
I was going to jump in, but I don't have to. We haven't written anything yet, but I think conceptually, if the goal is to minimize the impact of development on that resource, then maybe there have to be some explicit controls or a set of conditions that would get enacted if that development were to occur within the bounds of the purple block. So the details, we don't know, but I imagine it would be an added set of conditions that would need to be reviewed.
Is this relevant? There was a discussion of previous meeting that, that I was present at, that, about the, the fact that those larger blocks are not homogeneous at all, that they're, they're very, the stuff within them is quite, what's going on within them currently is quite diverse. And so if you overlay something that's covers the whole block, how you deal with that?
Well, my suggestion would be that if you, you're not at an appropriate distance to sort of see accurately the areas that are not purple. The areas that are not purple sort of relate to the white areas in the upper map. And they are all residences typically, you know, in those areas. That's all it is. So, so they're excluded already from the state designated forest block. And if you use the boundaries of the state designated forest block, you just aren't including any of the houses that are there. What you might be including are future houses, you know, with an extension from an existing road or something. So those would be the conditions that you would be concerned about trying to minimize the impact, except the fact that what's done is done. And they're not included in the forest blocks because, you know, they, they don't meet any of the criteria. So it would really be looking at those areas that do not have any development, but are, the ones most vulnerable would be those adjacent to, to development. And then trying to come up with an appropriate set of conditions to address the impact of development in those areas.
And the conversation thus far has sort of addressed the sense that an overlay district would probably the boundaries of the overlay district would likely use roads. So that it was a simplified way to map and identify your presence or absence in the overlay district. But then, within the language, there would be this recognition of existing use or, you know, grandfather development. Some, something like that, so that the boundary of the overlay itself would be easily recognized and mapped. But there would be this opportunity for the existing nuance to
So as you said, it would be most relevant to what might happen in the future.
As opposed to
Yeah. What is it?
But it's
And, you know, you don't need a zoning permit to continue, you know, doing everything you do in, on your existing property. So just the future changes. And, yeah, we're, we're just, once we get into it, we decide what, what is the easiest way to project graphically. But when a zoning administrator looks at it a little more deeply, those areas that are not purple, I don't think are going to warrant any further review.
I would just clarify one thing. Pip said that the existing uses, mainly residential uses, they would be in the overlay for sure. But like you said, what's kind of done is done.
Right.
But anything else that were to happen would need to conform with these. But would absolutely be a new set of, of regulation associated with those areas.
And that's typical of zoning regulations, that things that are already there, you know, they're there. It's a question of what happens from there or changed use of what's there.
Yeah.
That's the other
And so far, what's been talked about is to maybe establish an acreage or square footage max and expect to see that illustrated on a site plan so that there would be a defined area of development. You might put a, a maximum square footage on it. And one thing that was discussed is the
Use value appraisal.
Yeah, that, that happened to use two acres as a, as a, as a homestead site, you know, that's the, the assumption is you're going to take two acres out of whatever acres you have and use it for your own residential purposes. So that, you know, that was an idea that perhaps establishing that envelope for development on the lot might be appropriate. So there begin to be some, some limits. And then also that it should be as close to the road as possible and as close to, you know, existing interruptions in the, the force as possible. So you wouldn't be going a thousand feet deep into the lot. You know, and going there, you might be trying to stay within a couple hundred feet. So those, those, those design concepts, none of it's been worked out in any detail and it hasn't gotten to the state of
But the goal will be to minimize more fragmentation.
So I'm sorry not to understand this, but is, is it the plan that that will in fact be those, those things that you're just thinking about will be incorporated in the zoning?
Well, that's what we plan to do. We haven't done it. And what we're talking about, what are the things we think are important to consider? And we will be at a future of these meetings, sitting and looking at how it could be done and talking about it. So we're kind of doing the overview right now.
I'm just trying to understand sort of where we are in the process. So thinking about the meeting that's going to be in 10 days is going to be at the same level. It's not presentation of a, of a full
Correct.
That's one of, one of the
That's right, yes. I think as we're still getting our hands around exactly where we're going to be spending our time, we'll be looking at the calendar we've set out and possibly allocating more time to certain issues, maybe like forest blocks, and less time to other things that are less controversial. So we don't quite know where that balance is going to go yet because it's, we're, we're just landing on where I think time needs to be spent. And then we'll be looking at options.
Yeah, this is certainly one of the more complicated aspects of this project. It touches both, certainly multiple parts of the bylaw as well as the subdivision regulations. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot here. And there's a lot of options out there for
And I did, maybe it was premature to talk explicitly about ideas, but that, to give you a sense, you know, those are the, the types of things that have been talked about, but the pros and cons of them, we haven't had an extensive discussion. No decisions have been made, but, but that's gives you a feel of the flavor of the type of, you know, thinking that, that is going in in the conversation so far.
And it's also about like, what are existing data sources that we can actually use for this? So that people have certainty when they're planning and applying, you know. And when it comes to natural resources, sometimes that's complicated. And you would know that.
A lesson learned from our river corridor regs was that if you write into your zoning that you're going to reference a particular state document, that those sometimes are living documents and they change underneath you. Or we turned out, referenced some documents that then sort of evaporated off of the face of the earth. And so, yeah. It's, I think there's been some lessons learned there that, you know, as we approach this particular natural resource problem where we are looking to state mapping to provide some basis for our zoning administration, that we've got to have learned from that and figure out, you know, do we make this a static document that lives here in town? Or does it stay with whatever the state is doing in terms of its living documentation? And how does that, is that, which one serves our, our needs best? So.
Sure. We certainly learned those lessons over the years ourselves to varying degrees. So, yeah, I think it would be our recommendation. I think everything needs to be either created for Putney or, you know, maybe lifted from wherever
Yeah.
Source.
As of 2025.
Right.
Yeah. And then in our future updates, you know, look at whatever document we're sort of referring to and then change it accordingly if necessary. So.
So we're pretty sure this is going to take a lot of conversations. This is, this is already, we spent time, but that's because it will take time to, to get this right. So, yeah.
So, yeah, just to finish up on natural resources, we are going to look at the flood regs, as Andrew mentioned. And one of the, one of those aspects, just one of them is a small stream buffer. I gather there are some other changes that need to be made just based on, you know, state updated requirements, which someone else in our office is joining us. I don't know a lot about it, if you couldn't tell. But she's going to take a look at that. Alyssa Sinema, she's great. Get those updated. That's one of the, actually, the aspects of the document that we thought we were going to be Get those updated. That's one of the, actually, the aspects of the document that we thought we were going to be able to maybe trim a little bit. And it turned out that is just not a reasonable thing to do, given just the nature of you know, what they do and and that importance, which is growing.
Yeah, it's unfortunately a thick, I remember when we added it, that it was a thick addition and hasn't gone well.
The other section, like I mentioned, is the telecom section, which is another section of the of the regs that just is kind of static. It's just going to be, it is what it is and it's not going to be changing a whole lot. So.
Sorry, and that's because that's regulated at the state level and that, okay, so just bear with me, that so the 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 concept that you seem to say was was the way we're going at this point is to to establish the town zoning bylaws with full reference to everything that's going on at the state at the moment. And but have it obviously be a document that deals very specifically with Putney and then deal with changes to state law as they happen in the future and a very specific, it seems like there's no other way to do it.
That's a great summary, Jim.
I think the telecom one is a pretty good example. So there there are two options you can do, whether Act two forty eight, which is the Public Utility Commission. The, sorry.
This is what applicants can do.
Applicants, yes, thank you. They can either go Act two forty eight or they can go local apply for a permit under local zoning or go through Act two forty eight. If the local zoning isn't as strong, you know, then you have less control. Which is obviously that thing, right? You want to make sure that your regulations are at least as
robust.
Yeah. Robust, thank you, as what the state process will be. So that's a specific example for the
And if that, the state process changes in the future, then the there's effort made to incorporate those changes into the bylaw. To ensure you don't learn to do that.
As long as the state continues to allow developers a choice.
Yeah.
If they don't offer the choice, just they hit state regs, then we don't need to do it. So.
And river corridors is an example of sort of a different pathway that things happen where post Irene, the state said, you know, hey, we want everybody, and this is sort of happening with the connectivity blocks and wildlife corridors, where the state is coming down and saying, we want to see language related to this topic appearing in your zoning bylaws. And so we had a grant to tackle the river corridors piece. And you're going to have to remember, remind me, is it one seventy six is the one related to? Yeah, I know. Related to the wildlife corridor. One seventy one, yeah. So the state again has said, hey, this is something we want to see addressed in your bylaws. So that is part of what is prompting this, you know, sort of review instead of changes.
I I don't want to. So is there any relatively simple answer to the question, what does the state? What is being decided, has been decided at the state level that relates to the way we write our zoning regs? I mean, it was mentioned that every place you can have a single family, you can have two family now.
Right.
Are there, is it five things like that or is it fifty things like that?
It's in the middle. I mean.
It's a lot. So if it's twenty five, it's still, that's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, in ADU can not be subject to a more strenuous review than a single family home.
It just seems to me.
We were focused on housing issues primarily.
Most recently, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It seems like to me that would be, if there are people coming to the meeting in ten days or week, whatever it is, who don't know a whole lot about this, that would seem to me to be something that they would be very concerned about. So I just love that.
So I think what I hear you saying, Jim, is it could be helpful to say we have as a goal to respond to changes in state law and give a flavor of what that is. So much of it's housing, quite a lot of it. There are some things having to do with natural resources, right? The changes in Act two fifty and all that has made some changes.
One seventy one, yeah.
And so those are really the two biggest areas, frankly. And then it has impact across all the document, right? So, but you're right to say, and we've been searching ourselves to say, if you could, you know, what are the themes? The one other theme that you heard at the very top is trying to make them more useful for everybody, right? So for applicants overall, the process, make the zoning regs and the process easier for applicants as well as for the zoning administrator and the DRB. And so we're trying to do all those things at once. And that that overlaps with some of what the state is saying also, make it easier for everybody. But we have to figure out what that looks like.
I appreciate you reminding us that we periodically update it, which which we have, and we have a history of doing that. When we notice something is not right, not consistent with state law, it sort of doesn't matter, I think. You know, the state law has changed it, changed it. Ours has, for all intents and purposes, changed. But the language hasn't. So every couple of years, we've gone through the process. It's a little bit tedious because of the
Also makes it easier, nor makes it more user friendly, because then someone tried to do it, it's all in one place.
And we're trying to think of other ways to present some of this information that would help you figure that out more quickly. Because sometimes you do have to look at seven sections.
And the document itself has been, because of incremental changes, right, it has over the years, little modifications get made in different sections. And so a review like this is a helpful opportunity to make sure the document is not self contradictory and doesn't have weird pieces of missing legacy language and bad references and things like that. So that is part of the work that's being done.
We've got some rough language that never got out.
I'm not sure whether it's premature, but I, one of the conclusions I'm coming to is that the document is got to be complex because the issues are complex and you can do the best you can to make it readable. But it really depends on having administrative staff who can present the the document to the applicant. And then maybe a series of handouts, which we don't have, you know, the 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 one on one on this issue, you know, have a couple of them printed up and have someone work with the zoning administrator to develop up those those handy, the handouts. And I think that would really help. The, an applicant, we just haven't had the time to do it, nor, you know, really the development pressure, you know, it's so it's so minimal that there's no point to putting a lot of energy into something if you're never going to get used. So.
Good discussion. That was really, thank you for those questions, Jim. Now we're at slide six.
Just a couple, just a couple more. So the the zoning map is definitely something that we wanted to take a look at. I don't think it really makes sense to do that at this point for for a number of reasons, but this is the excerpt from the in the zoning map, the village center where we are now, and shows every zoning district that on it, really.
Oh, cool. You did, yeah, they are all there. And there's your MU.
That's sort of why it's, I think, another process to address the zoning map and and by extension, it'll, that will touch on the bylaw because the bylaw sets how the zone districts are created. And it's a fairly complicated process. But to change people's owning, that's a, it's a very large task that kind of demands its own process, its own public process, certainly, because it could impact people's livelihoods. Certainly their bank accounts, I guess, as well. So that's something that we kind of set out to to take a look at, but ultimately kind of backed off that for those, for those reasons. It's a, it's a major, it's a major, major thing that we're undertaking here. So one thing we will be looking at is, you know, the different uses that are allowed and through what process in each of those zone districts. It's a goal, stated goal in the town plan, you know, you want to focus the development that happens in and around the village center. Right? And it's something that is a goal in a lot of town plans and Putney's is no different, no, no difference, excuse me. The dimensional standards are something that I just mentioned, it's how the zone districts are created, which is a fairly complicated process, but it's just a buffer basically on each of the roads. So you have a lot of properties that have two, even three, sometimes four districts in in one property. It makes potentially developing that property very complicated process. So that's part of the making it easier for for applicants and also for the zoning administrator and the general review board as well.
It's important to point out that some of our biggest situations like that where there are multiple zones are actually what we would call educational districts. So, you know, Landmark or Putney School have, and they, and they're subject to Act two fifty, so they already have that review process they go through. So that's one place where we already have kind of an integrated process. I'm not entirely sure how we're really impacting that, any change, anything about that. But there's a place where the different uses come under one review and Act two fifty. So that's been figured out. But there are other places where that isn't the case. You have multiple uses and it's allowed to do Act two fifty.
There's a, there's a formula to to determine if you have enough space in a particular zone district to achieve the use that you want on property, your property. It's just not very useful, not very useful exercise to go through for someone who wants to build a house and can I, can I do this, this property? Like, what are the setbacks here? This is a very complicated process. That's certainly something that.
I've looked at this map a lot and I don't know that I had realized before that we have like this region of village residential that there is a lot that is in-village residential and then continues on directly into conservation, right? So like two districts that have, if we looked at back at our chart, have very different sets of allowable uses and setback requirements. You've got a single lot that is crossing that boundary. Would make it really complicated for the individual to try to figure out what what they were allowed to do.
Without a doubt, yeah.
Which is why it would be nice to go to parcel based zoning, but that's just a huge change.
So it's certainly the recommendation, but not appropriate for for this process, I believe. Is there any questions about the zoning map, the zoning districts? So the subdivision regulations, by contrast, are a much simpler document. It's about a third the size, I think it's thirty five pages or so. So that's nice from a review standpoint. But we want to overall, we want to touch up the document a little bit, make sure everything makes sense, it's in the appropriate spot. And the references are all correct so that when someone is, you know, needs to look up something in state statute, they're looking right. We want to make sure that Putney's goals in the town plan are reflected in in the subdivision regulations, certainly the conservation goals. And that's kind of illustrated in those pictures at the bottom. I want to integrate Act two fifty requirements and concepts that that are new as of, you know, just the past couple of years. So it has to do with access and there's schedules in the tiering systems that will will impact development quite a bit, we think, we hope. Also potential process changes, you know, are these reviews appropriate for the types of subdivisions that they're assigned to and potentially some new subdivision types, including conservation subdivision that we see here on the bottom right. We think that's something that's a good idea and could potentially lead to some significant forest retention or, you know, ag land retention, et cetera. So definitely a much lighter lift. There's just kind of subdivision regulations by their nature are kind of, they're kind of what they are. And there's only so much you can change and they're not as technical as the zoning bylaws, certainly, most of the, most of the technical nature of them are on others, applicants generally. They have to create a survey, survey needs to correspond with whatever requirements that professionally seen surveys which are required.
Have there been, are are subdivisions, do they, that do request for subdivisions?
Single lot. Yeah, one lot into two or
Oh, okay.
Swamps like boundary changes.
Okay, but not, not things like the pictures down here? Not at all or not?
Putney Commons
Yeah.
Was the last that I can recall.
Okay, so it's not something that's happened on a regular basis?
Not recently, no.
But maybe an important thing to consider with the goals around housing, right?
Sure.
We are.
Sure, sure. I'm just curious.
Very, very little happens, you know, so.
So for example, this is more about the village and neighborhood, neighborhood NDA, the development area. We just wrote a grant for comprehensive village plan. And that comprehensive village plan would look at the NDA and the village area, which are related to each other. And identify how infill housing could happen along with relevant commercial development that balances its economic development and housing. And it would put housing types in there, including cluster. So you can do it as part of, you know, what would be a rural village, but you could also be doing it in the village and the village plan would help us say this kind of development here, including existing properties that could have expansions or additions on them. And the idea would be in that case to do kind of what that is, is to suggest what could happen and then provide incentives and de-risk it to be done, so that that's the preferred choice when development happens. So that that'll be a focus for the village and the NDA. And we'll also be identifying how to expand the NDA in village area potentially in the future and what that would mean for infrastructure. So the zoning regs can't take that on right now, but we'll be doing what we can with the current. Well, it'll support the infill, but I would I'm sorry, we're not ending it. The neighborhood development area. So there's different dis specialized districts that have certain kinds of incentives and benefits that come to elite criteria at the state level and state approves your neighborhood development area. So we're in a neighborhood development area here. It extends over to Al's Hallway Drive. It overlaps with the village district to some degree. So there's a really great map in the the town plan that I can show you that shows you that seven or something, eight.
The state created a pathway for either developers or communities to request the designation of a portion of their town that meets some criteria and it allows for somewhat quicker review process, especially related to Act two fifty. Carried with it some sort of built in zoning changes and Peter Kaji at Wyndham Ridge Housing Trust came to the town and suggested that we evaluate whether it would be beneficial to the town. And we went through a process where we felt it would be beneficial and modified some of the zoning, not extensively, mostly we just acknowledged that there's a need for sidewalk considerations. Sort of smart growth principles that were planning principles at the state level, make sure they were incorporated at the local level. And having done that, we then designated an area with water and sewer and sidewalks as this neighborhood development area.
Thanks. Yeah, make sure I know what the acronyms are.
Non-disclosure agreement, I'm not allowed to talk about this?
There's some pretty big changes with Act two fifty. That will be amended over the next couple of years that could potentially significantly change the development situation in in many towns, but Putney included for sure. It's unclear, I guess, at this point, what tier Putney will fall in, but they meet a lot of the requirements for a higher level tier, which does include some Act two fifty exemptions potentially. but they meet a lot of the requirements for a higher level tier, which does include some Act two fifty exemptions potentially in those specific areas, which are, will be hundred percent like right in the village. Um, not like whole town, but right near where it's already a goal to have.
Yeah, especially if there's, uh, sewer and water infrastructure available.
Yeah, that's one of the big ones.
Or a proposal to expand it. So that's one of the things, why we want to identify where areas for expansion. It might be some of that multi-use district we're just looking at would be a good, big bet for that.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So that's the bulk of my presentation here. Um, but we, I'll go through this obviously in that meeting before, meeting next week more in detail. But this is, these are the ways that the public can be engaged in the process. Um, we're going to be collecting, um, comments over the next several months. Um, and they can meet some indirectly, Sue or I?
Sue Weston.
Sue Weston. Or Sue Coop, if you can.
That's true. Sue Weston's, um, gonna be.
That's me.
We're hoping they, we'll take them anywhere they come. Including, you know, like, um, the Putney website, obviously everyone here knows, but people at the meeting might not. That's where we go to get all the information. Is there anything else, Sue, that you can think of that I should include in this?
No, I mean, I think those are the processes. I mean, the only other thing I would say is these meetings are publicly noticed and anybody can attend and listen in. So, uh, I think we should probably add that, that, you know, we have monthly planning commission meetings where this will be a topic and, you know, people can come and attend and listen. Uh, there's some people like Doug who've done that quite a lot and added value.
We'll get a couple more commissioners out of it, too.
We can have five, so no, they're almost there. Yeah, that's it. All right. So I think the feed, one piece of feedback on that is can we have a slide that would talk about changes at the state level, what do they largely impact? That was really what Jim's question was. And that they mostly go to housing and natural resource conservation. And hence a lot of what we're looking at here is aligned with that. Is that fair to say that Jim is kind of?
Yeah, I mean, anything that the state says, we have to do it that way. I mean, one, one thing people are going to be wondering at this is what is Putney deciding? And what is this group deciding that's going in here? And what are, what they, what do they have no power to decide?
Well, it's, it's funny because we can't. It's all done with enabling legislation, you know, we're empowered from the state. They have zoning rates and have zoning rates of these types. It's pretty broad, you know, so that then you get into the nitty gritty of it and there's a lot of opportunity for, first, you know, for municipal differentiation. Like ultimately, it's, as the state said, we could do it.
I think it's also important, Sue, that's a great idea, we'll definitely include those specifics. That presentation will be preceded by Sue's kind of zoning one-on-one. So to get a little bit more of a context about that meeting, how that will work. Um, in isolation, it doesn't work as well, but hopefully with the, it was only one-on-one. So I'm sure you're gonna knock right out of the park. It'll make a little bit more sense, hopefully.
All right, well, speaking of time, um, we need to move on. We're going to spend a few minutes talking about the April tenth meeting and more specifics and, um, and activity there. So Sue, maybe you want?
Sure. Sure, so I hope that you all have, um, the draft, uh, meeting agenda. Well, actually, it's not even really drafted.
No, it's.
It is a meeting agenda.
I got it.
Uh, for next week, next Thursday at Landmark College at the Student Center. Um, and of course, we've identified some introductions and welcoming, um, the president of the college is going to join us briefly. And, um, Sue and Pip are going to present an overview of the status of this project. And then I'm going to, um, present this introduction to zoning or zoning one-on-one presentation that I've been working on. It's a high-level presentation that considers what zoning is, what it does, what it can do and, and what it does not do. Um, and then also, uh, specifically, um, looking at some of those elements in the Putney, uh, bylaws themselves as they currently exist. And with some reference maybe to some of the things that, um, like we'll be talking about later, looking at the, what you saw today more specifically at the topics that, um, Putney will be considering. After that, um, of course, we'll have time for some questions and answers. I, we have proposed an exercise that is something that the state developed, um, from their, uh, in conjunction with their homes for all toolkit. And it's these three sheets that you have in, in front of you here. And we're hoping that you, um, folks can help us facilitate this. So we're going to break up into groups and consider, uh, this development. And maybe I'll pass around, I started thinking about some, um, questions to guide that discussion. Um, or some direction today. And then Sue reminded me that we were going to, um, also identify a couple of questions to help, uh, with the finally presenting, um, out what each group learns um, in the discussion. But this is basically a model, um, site on the second page. You can see, uh, where it's identified. It's from the town of Waterbury. So it, I don't think it really matters that it's not here in Putney because it's designed to just get folks really thinking about zoning and how it works. And so in this case, um, there's a lot, a little over a half an acre. Um, and you're asked to, if you can, uh, create eight units on this parked property. Uh, because that's what the developer thinks they need, um, to make the project work financially. And so some things that you know, and, and this, most of this information is, uh, laid out on the first page in the introduction and instructions. Um, there is sewer and water infrastructure available. There are no environmental constraints on this site. Um, there is an existing home that needs to stay because it's historic. And, um, there are specific zoning standards that are laid out on the first page as well. Um, the lot coverage and setbacks and building height and those kinds of things. And then on the third page, the state has identified a, a number of different types of housing that they feel, um, can work well in many village centers around Vermont. And, um, it shows just different, the different styles of the buildings, how many units are accommodated and the size of those structures. And, um, then the facilitators, um, once, you know, you review all of this information um, and make sure that, you know, you talk to the group about how this information isn't exact. It doesn't need to be like perfect, but it's really to get an idea of what could be done. We would assume that this, uh, home in, that's existing is a single-family home. We would suggest that the, uh, group identify some of those, um, setbacks that are required, um, such as, you know, you can't, um, there's a minimum four-foot side setback. So using the scale here, identify approximately, you're not really going to be able to fit your four feet exactly on this. But, you know, you can't build right up to the edge of the property is based. This is the important thing there. Um, and then consider what, which of these building types or maybe multiple building types could work to get up to those eight uni- units and how they would, uh, be laid out on this site. You also need to make sure that you think about parking and a driveway. And, um, the, you know, typical sizes of those are laid out, um, on the bottom of this typologies page as well. Um, I think I'm going to bring, um, some scrap paper or pencil paper and pencils or pens so that, um, people can draw things if they want as they're trying to figure this out. Um, and, you know, then we hope that, you know, folks will come up with their best plan, um, in each group. And then we will share, um, out to the larger group and just answer a couple of questions like, well, first of all, could you fit eight units onto this parcel? Um, did that work for you? If not, how many could you fit? And what were some of the issues that you ran into through the process?
Question?
Yes.
Just create eight residential units, so new units, so nine units total?
Um, no, I'm, I'm gonna say eight total. Cause I think that's hard enough to do.
So that's including the one that's there already?
Right, right.
Yeah, so seven more.
Yeah.
Okay. Unless you did something with the existing house, but you don't know enough about it.
Right, I don't, you know, and, um, I did, I, I, it's hard to tell. Um, I did send a question to the state to ask them to, you know, was this considered single-family? And I believe that it was, but if not, if he sends me some more information, then, you know.
You can also just say that's what it is.
Exactly.
It's just an exercise.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's probably the best thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you can say, you could put an ADU in that, whatever you want to say.
Right, right, right.
You follow the rule.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a good question, how do we, what do we do with these statistics?
I know, and you can't really see, so you can't really tell like how an ADU would fit, uh, or whatever. But, um, yeah, does anyone have any questions about that? Do you think, you know, you'd be comfortable working with folks? And just, I mean, it's not, we don't even have that much time identified, I think, baby. What do we have, a half an hour? Uh, but it's really about the discussion and working through the process.
You, do you have a sense from maybe doing things like this elsewhere? What kind of people, what sorts of people are going to show up for this and, or engage in this process? And kind of what do you, what, what do you want to get out of it? Do you want people to say, oh, I get zoning better than I did before?
Yes, that's basically it.
Right, and then saying, well, this makes me think of this that really needs to be in there. I, I just don't kind of know what the tenor of this meeting is.
Yeah, I think it's really just about understanding zoning. Um, and, uh, as Mike gets into his present, presentation too, there's going to be more time um, for, uh, community input. And if, you know, folks have, um, experienced zoning through, you know, whether they've tried to build a house or cut off a lot or, you know, subdivision regulations, whatever. Um, and they have comments or concerns, then we hope that, you know, they'll share them with us. Peter?
Hi, Sue, Sue, just to kind of clarify, so our role in this exercise would be maybe, maybe not quite technical assistance, but just kind of helping, walking through, helping people to walk through what they might want to think about as they're trying to develop this lot?
That's correct.
Great, okay, thank you.
And I, I did pass out this outline with some of those items to help folks think through it. I'm going to add some more things on it before the next meeting and we'll pass it out to, um, all the, uh, folks who are helping to facilitate. Now, as they go in the meeting, I, we don't really know how many people are going to come. So we have no idea how many, um, the, the groups will break out into, you know, and it is different in each community. Um, I think zoning is something that a lot of folks don't pay attention to until it affects them. And so, you know, often where you do get a really big turnout is if there was a development proposal recently that folks were unhappy with or something, then they might come out more. Um, and, and Putney, a lot of people are just interested and involved anyway. So you might get a pretty good turnout anyways.
And so the idea is each person's trying to solve this problem. They're sitting in a group, but they're each trying to solve this on their own.
Um, or as a group, or as a group, yeah. But they might be making their own notes and then talking about it, you know, with the other members of their group.
You might find it helpful to actually give them a piece of paper that actually just has the, something big enough that they could all get around and look at so they can be like scribbling. I mean, your piece of paper could be something even like a legal-sized piece of paper and let them, you know, scribble on it to like, and just has the footprint of the property.
Or even, yeah, that plus, uh, four or five pieces of paper shit like this, you know?
Yeah, that's what Peter Dunbar did. Did actually create that. But yeah, they're really, they should be different colors for the different types and, you know, that's all you do.
That's what I figured, if, if there was paper available and pens at least, people could, you know, draw the different things and, um, figure out, you know, the parking, all those things.
So thinking like a developer, so there, there's no, nothing in this about while you're trying to maximize the number of people that you're gonna fit into this space or you're gonna kind of maximize.
Eight units, they're saying, um.
The goal is to, to, okay, you need to get eight units.
Right, to make it work financially. That's what the developers say.
To make it better in some way for some criteria, it has to be eight.
I don't know if there's any really right answer
Right.
to this. Um, and some people might come back and say, there's no way. We couldn't figure out any way to put eight units up. We could put, you know, five or whatever.
This is a resource that was just developed at the state level, correct?
Yes, as part of their homes for all toolkit.
Um, the neighborhood context photo seems to be a road front, um, representation of these two lots.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm wondering if someone, I would actually personally find it helpful to know like how many units are in this lot and how many units are in this lot? As a sort of a visual to say, okay, well, you know, like.
I can ask.
Yeah, I've got this thing here and I've got cut and paste, but, um, that would be a useful frame of reference for how my brain works to know what those other aerial
Yeah.
lots have.
I don't know if they.
If that data existed.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure that this is a real street in Waterbury.
It is, yes.
With real units, so if they have those numbers, it would be it.
Uh-huh, I'll ask.
Peter, do you have another question or is your hand still up?
I, I do have another question. Um, in the context of this, this exercise, how bound are we to the three different typologies shown? Um, I know you said this is more about understanding how zoning works and how it can apply. Um, but if folks want to get creative with different housing types that aren't, aren't shown on the, the sheet, is that in the spirit of the, uh, in the exercise?
Say, yes, if you, you know, identify the size of a house and how those units would fit into it that worked better than any of these, why not?
I'm thinking specifically of like, go, people thinking about height and, and going up, uh, like an extra floor or something.
Right, um, and there are, you know, some limits to the height and the, uh, standards on the first page.
Yeah, thirty-eight feet maximum building height.
I'd rather take you to a story.
If you have three stories. My story's tall.
Sixteen feet of floor.
Additional story if you're doing affordable housing.
Peter, I approached it just as like site planning one-on-one. You know, you're given sort of a topology there and I think it would be challenging to spend the time to design a better unit, you know, and figure out whether it really would work. I don't know, it feels like you're just kind of moving some Lego blocks and seeing what the implications are.
That's really kind of what it is.
And then, you know, once you throw parking in there, I mean, that's going to really be interesting, you know, to and the parking where you'd like the parking to be and et cetera. So I think that level would be enough.
Yep, that makes sense, thank you.
Yes?
Would be helpful if we have the dimensions of this, I mean, oh, it's all in here.
Of this property?
Yep, yeah, it's all in here.
That's, that's, that's.
So it's on this page with the.
Well, right.
It's also in the.
That's from the front page here, except for this, you know, it's not exact.
It's kind of rough, yeah, cause when I scaled it, I got to be bigger than.
Right.
Oh, seventy-five by four hundred.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It kind of, that's architect scale.
No, I didn't, I just made a scale from a piece of paper. No, I didn't, I just made a scale from a piece of paper.
That's right, I said that's the first thing I would do. Can we just give a piece of paper with a scale and start?
We're actual Legos.
Yeah, I know.
I got twenty-seven units so far.
The Wall City in China, you like recreated uh, the, the Wall City in China, what was the name of that?
So we really don't. And the room has round tables, we're sitting at round tables. So it'll be already easily set up that people can just get around their table and do it. So we have enough to do ten tables, we have ten tables, I doubt we'd have that many people. How many people do you think per table, so that we should uh, install it? Yeah, four or five, okay.
Wouldn't do any more than that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so um, we'll be doing this in real time, we'll figure out how many people are there. And uh, everybody here, um, including on Zoom, though Karen will be away on vacation, so she won't be joining us. Um, but uh, Rai and Peter will be part of this hopefully. Rai will be online, I think possibly, so we'll give some thought to how to do this online. And um, we'll have a little side conversation about that.
Yeah, that sounds good, I have also, I went to the Homes For All thing a couple of years ago up in Berry, so I have done activity before.
Great.
So if I miss out on this particular piece of it, it's okay.
Okay, great, well, let's talk about how that can be set up online and what, what would be needed.
Should we bring any props, each of us?
Well.
Or will those be provided or?
I think that, I think what Sue is saying, she's gonna give you scraps of paper and pens, that's about all she was preparing to do. I think it wouldn't be bad, maybe for some people just have some graph paper, for example, you know, just to. You know, that, that would, scraps could be graph paper, that might make it easier.
Yeah.
So you just asked Rai a useful question.
Yes.
Which was, do you have any?
Right, do you have feedback from doing that that would guide us here?
Um, we did a property in Bellows Falls, which I thought was really funny. Uh, and they had a twelve by eighteen size poster. And then they had um, printed out the different kinds of buildings and then cut them out. At the, at the right scale, so that we really could play with Legos kind of. In that way, so we weren't imagining it in our heads or trying to draw it or sketch it out. We actually had a big map of the property, um, which was at least twelve by eighteen. And then we had all the, the different kinds of houses and we had a little cutout for. Um, a parking spot and then where the insets were, we had um. Um, some markers on, on the like forty feet or whatever the, that was. Um, so that might be, if we can do a little bit of printing, that might be the simplest for. Being able to really visualize it with all the rest of the people at the table, um, so people can debate like this shape house versus this shape house.
And I'm really in favor of that, I think we could spend a lot of time at the beginning.
Just try to get your head around.
Cutting pieces of paper up and saying, no, that's not quite, you know, that sort of thing, just give it to everybody.
Just each one has a kit and you have some graph paper and uh, these things and place them on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's very simple, it doesn't have to be complicated.
Uh, well, we weren't planning to do large, the large scale maps, just because that's a lot of printing. Um, it, it is really ideal and I have, I was at that same workshop. Um, but I was also, I also did it this way at a conference afterward. And, you know, it works, it's not as great, but um, you know, it still helps you to think through the process.
Right, so I guess the suggestion, sort of the in-between thing is just get pieces of standard graph paper.
Yeah.
And then possibly just cut out some things, so you hand it to them with some cutouts and then they move them over.
Yeah, a standard piece of sized graph paper with the lot to scale.
Yeah.
And then to scale cutouts, what, four or five, you know, to, with private parking. It doesn't have to be complicated.
Good suggestion, thank you, Rai, for that. All right, um. So it would be good if you arrived a little before the meeting, so that everybody can have their packet and be ready. Any other comments, questions about the agenda, suggestions? It is meant to be final, but there's also these, the hand movements, how to do things.
I'm sure it'd be part of the introduction, but I'm still, uh, I'm still sort of on the subject of walking in there. And, and wanting to understand what is this meeting for? And it's probably, I'm sure you've said it many times, you'll say it again, but. I would walk into that kinda confused, are they telling us what they've been doing or we're telling them what we want? And um, just clarifying that.
Yeah.
I mean, something.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the opening part. Welcoming people while, while we're here, I hope people get out of it. Um, I will say that I have mentioned to people that if people out of this have things, they want to see addressed in zoning. This would be a great time, we should just have a way to collect that information. Um, because we'll say, great, this is, this is the time to bring up things.
But do you want them saying, I have this pet thing, or would you rather have them write that down and put it in the box? Right, because then otherwise.
Yeah, all of a sudden you're, yeah, right. Yeah.
We can certainly address some questions.
Some questions and we can, and we can also just be making a list.
Right, yes.
Putting a list up saying, here are some things to think about. Yeah, I, I was talking to somebody who's trying to come up with a type of modular housing being built in Putney. And wants to be able to do it in the village and, and I said, great. Uh, if you have thoughts about how zoning works or doesn't work right now, tell us, you know, if you wanna be doing this modular housing. So, yeah, I think it's good for people to say, we'd like to do these kinds of things. We would hope that zoning can accommodate that versus getting into a specific.
Yeah, they're, they're pet thing.
The right thing, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, all right, sounds good.
And then the one other thing we're gonna talk about a little bit was the schedule tonight, yes. And I think what we, what we have is in your packet, is the schedule that you got on February fourth, it's no different. Um, it's a little different.
What's the difference?
Um, the main, I'm trying to think if we changed any dates.
No dates, I didn't see that.
Okay, well, the main thing is then um, where we identify the review of the sections. Uh, we added uh, what those sections are, but before we just said like section one through three. Now, so you can see it right there. Section one, admin and procedures, two permits and approvals, and three zoning district, districts. That's what we hope to cover in the May meeting. And so basically, after this public meeting, we're going to get into, you know, the details of. Uh, reviewing the zoning uh, recommendations that Pip and Mike really have been working on. And Sue, of course, has been involved and Karen as well. Um, and we hope that we'll be able to uh, review three sections at each of these meetings. We're not gonna go through line by line, but um, we're going to go through um, a list of. You know, really the most significant changes in each of those sections and what um, we're proposing. Um, and we'll have a discussion, you know, at a meeting like this. And we're kinda gonna just have to see how it goes in terms of timing.
What's the timeline in which you think you'll have those proposed ideas for review prior to the meeting? I imagine they have to be publicly warned, right, Sue?
Yes, they do.
It would be that sort of week.
I mean, these, these are monthly planning commission meetings, so we have to post everything on Thursday for Tuesday.
Yeah.
And I, we need to have, they really like it by noon on Thursday.
Yeah. Do you suspect that that's sort of the timeframe, you're gonna have things ready or will there be a full week of lead time? Just in terms of art, I think that those meetings will probably, there could be some streamlining to them if everybody's had a chance to.
Right.
Read and highlight and.
Yeah, actually it'd be better if they were out longer.
Cause, because they're working on them already, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, I mean, essentially the suggestions are, are there already, it's just implementing them in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be.
I didn't care enough in the meeting for the past while, I didn't know exactly what to say.
Yeah, so I mean, for example, for May sixth meeting, if we did it the Thursday before. Um, we would be having things on uh. May, Thursday, May first, but really giving them more time, if we could have it on like the Friday, twenty-fifth of. April, it gives people a couple of weekends, you know, to look at things, but I don't, you'll have to figure that out. But I think the point is a good one, Andrew, that let's give people more time to really look at it, cause this is not bedtime reading.
Yeah.
And that won't be a problem.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, any given weeknight is not predictably available. So the more time I have, we're gonna.
So that's a good recommendation. And as I said at the top of the meeting, as we go further into this, we may decide that some things need more than ninety minutes. Um, I think this forest blocks section is gonna be hard to do in ninety minutes, I doubt we will do it. So there may be through this, a need to either have additional time or. Change the time we have for things that don't take as much time, I, it's hard, we're gonna, we're gonna learn as we go.
Yeah, and when we were doing the town plan, I wonder if there is opportunity here? If people were to have that opportunity to, for additional preview time. Um, and then could send to you to compile, like. Hey, here are the things I, I plan to want to discuss. You may have, before that meeting, you may have some sense of, I remember when we were doing river corridors. And we would like start at the top and try to, or, or when we were doing the town plan, we would start at the top of the section and try and work our way through. And there were times where it'd be like, wait, wait, who's like, you know, what's, what's spooling up here? Like, who wants to talk about this and this and this and this? And having a sense of how much people are gonna wanna talk about one particular section ahead of time could help to.
Yeah.
Prejudge time allocation.
Yeah, so in addition to give people time to review, for them to come in and say, here are the things I wanna talk about, you know, in that sets up the conversation. Um, to be more strategic is what I would say in terms of time allocation.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's a great point, that's, that's a good, we can try that out, let's try it out for the first meeting.
See if it works.
Right, that's May sixth, right?
Clarify for me what the advisory committee should be doing in all of this.
I think two things, learning about what the conversation is.
And I guess what I was, what I meant was, are we going to be participating each of these meetings?
That's right, yeah, that's what we invited you all to do. Um, and to be in this conversation with us. Bringing up different points of view. I think the view, the point, the belief, and I think what we've seen already. Is the more points of view you have early at the table about it, the more robust. The develop, what you develop is, because it's already been informed versus waiting for the hearing, you know.
It just wasn't clear to me whether, to what extent the advisory committee was going to be participating in each aspect of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And each, again, what you'll be getting is not having to go through each line, we've been doing that, that takes a very long time. But to, to see what's on the table. This is, this is what, when the regional is gonna be saying, we will recommend here.
So we would be getting things a few days in advance.
At least a week in advance. That'll come to, come to all of us.
All of you, of course, it would come to us too.
The, the planning commission is getting it when you're getting it.
Right.
That's how we did the town plan as well, we just put it out there and then we were all learning about it and providing our feedback on it together.
Are there more people in the advisory committee?
There are, um, and we didn't have a strong turnout this evening, but I, a lot of people were traveling, is what I found out. Um, the people who are not here were, were not, not available, so. There's something about late March, early April people that wouldn't be here.
Seems like a good time to get out of the country.
There's that too. I won't go there. Okay, so that's what we're gonna be doing and um, any other things you wanted to ask? Uh, Sue about the meeting next week? I, I will just say that we could use some help getting the word out. Um, in your packet, you will see this, not all of you have it in color, um, but you have, you can download it and print it out. Get, get the word around, I would suggest that your neighbors or people you know who are really interested in development. This would be good for people to come, be, become plugged in. I don't know how to reach that now, so I'm not, uh, we were trying to use social media and that was kinda backfiring, so. Not doing it that way. Yeah, that's fine.
This has been posted around town?
Uh, this is, yeah, you'll see it.
It's good that it's on the sign in front of town hall.
Yeah, isn't that nice, I didn't even ask for that, good. Thank you, Karen. Or ask for it. Maybe Rachel did.
Okay. Sent to folks like the Landmark College Committee.
Yes, they actually were distributing it themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and I will be doing an email to what I call the town plan list plus. So I keep having this list of people who've signed up.
Yeah.
And so I can send out um, a hundred a day at no cost, so I send out a hundred a day.
You could send that out, is that what you're saying?
Well, I sent out a little message, you know, just saying, come join us. And I'll probably put this image in there, but I will say a little bit more, say an invitation.
You could do that a couple of times.
I could do that a couple of times between now and the tenth and. I'll, I'll just have a couple of other updates, I'll just say, planning commissioner's doing things and. You know, we finished our housing study and it's calling for more housing and now we're looking at zoning and that's really important to be able to do more housing. While also winning our town plan goals for conservation and natural resource management, so come be part of the conversation. So I'll say something like that and get that out, um, but that may or may not be the right list of people, so. People who just said they're interested to get information. So any help you can do, you can write messages to people you know or just send us to them, that would be great.
Is it safe to, so everybody knows where the student center cafe is?
Well, if they don't, yeah, they, so another wonderful thing about Landmark College is they're providing wayfinding, starting at Route Five.
Great.
So all the way down, you know, to get where to turn at Landmark College and where to park and so forth, yeah. And it'll be actually.
So it's gonna be light, we can see signs.
I was just gonna say, right, and they're actually gonna have their security people ready to help people to leave with parking or getting into the building. And the building is, uh, is very close to the lower parking lot, the main one.
Take the second driveway. So it's not where the Thanksgiving dinner is?
No.
So I don't know where it is. Turn off of, of Route Five on River Road, take the second driveway.
It's called.
Everybody understands that except me.
Yeah, but you're gonna see, it's called Bob Rhodes Drive. And you'll see Bob Rhodes Drive, but there'll be signs, they're gonna have sandwich signs all the way around, so they promised me they'll do that and they'll have people helping people.
As long as you don't come via high, low, bitty road.
Yeah.
You'll run into a sign, I like that.
I don't think you really can come by way of high, low, bitty road.
On foot or bicycle.
Actually, I've never done, I tried to do it once, it was like.
Don't go in the summertime where it's grown up, you gotta go. And the vegetation isn't grabbing. And the vegetation isn't grabbing you.
All those ticks.
It's down here.
All right, I think we're done with this meeting. Um, is there anything else about, anything, any other questions, feedbacks about this? I think we had that conversation.
Yeah.
We are. Again, you're welcome, Mary, thank you, Andrew, for coming, thank you, everybody for attending. Uh, Karen had a great vacation. And we will meet again April tenth or.
I just did that exactly what you did.